Well, we're here at the parking lot, parking lot six at the football stadium for a food giveaway that we're doing today.
So we're looking to serve 2,500 households today. Each family is going to, that comes through our line today is going to get a box of shelf-stable goods, a bag of frozen chicken. We have some produce as well, carrots, potatoes, cabbage, and also we're also giving out fresh eggs today.
A number of organizations have come together to make certain that we are providing resources to those in need. And this is the first of several monthly programs that we're going to be doing.
Important because there are a lot of people right now without jobs and it's a great help from this organization.
This means a lot to us because, to be honest, with the time that we're living through the pandemic, we've had some difficult moments and I think this is a very good help for those who are struggling with this.
It's a great help, to be honest, we didn't expect it, but it's good. We hope that we can see that and that it will end soon. Thank you.
You can go to LAFoodbank.org if you're looking to help. You can also look at LAFoodbank.org for ways to donate and also ways to find food near you via our pantry locator. There's no eligibility requirement, so all you have to do is drive your car and we'll load you up.
City Attorney Mike Fuhr responds to a gun violence surge. A name is selected for the LA Zoo Condor fundraiser, and the coronavirus memorial art commissions are looking for submissions. These stories and more up next on City Beat.
In response to a surge in gun homicides, City Attorney Mike Fuhr announced that his office has filed a nuisance abatement lawsuit against the owners of a volatile South Los Angeles apartment complex. As the site of an alleged homicide, arrests for gun assaults as well as gun and drug sales, the lawsuit seeks to have the apartment building declared a public nuisance, demands a multitude of managerial and physical improvements, and seeks civil penalties and costs.
Every neighborhood in our city deserves to be safe, and we need collectively to be taking every form of action we can to assure that that's true.
The Greater Los Angeles Zoo Association has just announced that their condor naming campaign has successfully raised over $31,000. The winning name of LA Zoo's new baby condor will be Cal for a male or Cali for a female. Support for the naming campaign came from all around the country and surpassed the target goal amount of $25,000. The Department of Cultural Affairs seeks to commission 200 artworks by no less than 200 lead artists who will receive seed funding of $600 each. The artists will get permission from family or friends to research the life of a person who has died from COVID-19. The artists will create a memorial which may be songs, poems, paintings, mixed media collages, or any other type of artwork that can be revealed within a video or series of still images posted online for the general public. For more details, visit cultureLA.org and check under the Grants and Calls tab. Mayor Eric Garcetti has appointed the first-ever climate emergency mobilization director. Veteran social impact strategist and environmental and health equity advocate Marta A. Segura will develop and oversee the Climate Emergency Mobilization Office and work closely with a newly established Climate Emergency Commission. Both the operations will be tackling the disproportionate health impacts of climate change on vulnerable frontline communities.
The beauty industry and barber shops have always been disseminators of information in the community. That's how Steve Ellis of Untouchable Academy sees it, and he's backing that belief up with a town hall to educate barbers and beauticians about the virus, how to stay safe, and how to get the word out to their clients.
The Academy and Maple are partnering to work with the beauty industry to get information out to the community regarding the COVID-19 virus. My thought has always been the beauty industry and the barber shops have always been disseminators of information in the community. So what would be a better thing to do than to educate those individuals, barbers and cosmetologists, about what the coronavirus is, what's going on with the vaccines, the shots, so they can in turn share that information with their clients?
We want to make sure that folks have the right information. Oftentimes, you can see something on social media or something on the news or other places, and it may not necessarily make sense, so our goal is to provide education.
So you've got one barber in a shop who cuts 10 heads, now he's educated 10 people. Those 10 people go home, talk to their families, and that word starts to spread very fast throughout the community, and I think the beauty and barber industry is very poised to do that.
So the thing with this virus, COVID, is that it always changes. That's what we already know. There are more than 100 types or variants of this virus. So it's possible that, like the virus, we're going to have to have other types in the
In a non-COVID season, the Economic and Workforce Development Department would be busy offering training to low-skilled workers and getting others lined up with jobs on construction and infrastructure. But while we're in the throes of this pandemic, the city department has had to shift their focus in order to reach Angelenos still in need of those vital services. General Manager Carolyn Hall dropped by via Zoom to tell us more about how that shift is going.
EWDD is the department in the city that's tasked with developing and implementing programs and initiatives that yield thriving businesses, create job training opportunities, and supports the growth of living wage jobs for the residents of the city of Los Angeles. In a non-COVID year, our day-to-day functions include working on real estate development projects, working with our workforce development ecosystem to place individuals that have a high barrier to employment into living wage jobs. We also work on providing financial support to small businesses, and those are the primary functions of the department. During the pandemic, the city of Los Angeles is one of the first cities to recognize the impact, the negative impact, to our small businesses, and the council offices, in collaboration with the mayor, use general fund dollars to put forward a loan program. We later, after the federal government provided the city with CARES Act funds, we moved the loans to grants to put out over $100 million in grants to small businesses and micro entrepreneurs, childcare providers, and street vendors. It's been really satisfying to provide that sort of support, and I know that all the staff at EWDD, despite the long hours and the weekends that they put in to make sure that these programs were up and running, we felt that it was important work that we were doing to ensure that there was a safety net for people. If you go to our website, our website is ewddlacity.com, you will find a list of the work source centers. Call them, and they will provide the assistance to individuals who need help with putting together the resumes, interview skills, and any other skill sets that are needed in order to go out and look for and find a job.
Through the pandemic, the Los Angeles Public Library has proven to be an asset that reaches well beyond the circulation of books and physical media. In case you didn't know, here is another free virtual service they offer, the Distance Learning Program.
The Los Angeles Public Library has many distance services to help students. We have many students on throughout the city when we were meeting in person, and now the student zone has become a virtual resources for the library and the communities. These student zones provide service to the general community, K to 12 students, so that they can sign up for a student zone helpers to assist them with their homework assignments. We see that as a big plus, having it in a virtual environment, because we see a bigger audience, that we can cover multiple communities, you know, more vast areas. We usually conduct a survey after each session, so we can see how, you know, how the session goes, and sometimes we do drop into some of the sessions to see how the students were doing with the student zone helpers. So we see that as a big benefit to the students, and also we see some of the parents who are booking those assignments ahead of time to have a connection with the student zone helpers on their homework assignments.
For most Angelenos, 2020 was a year unlike any other in our lifetime with a pandemic. We also mourned the loss of a beloved sports icon, witnessed waves of social unrest across the nation, and elected the first female person of color to the vice presidency. In an effort to memorialize the events of 2020, Councilmember John Lee is calling for items to include in District 12's 2020 Time Capsule. He spoke with us recently to explain the importance of preserving those moments.
Mysterious pneumonia outbreak in Wuhan, China.
A new type of coronavirus.
The number of affected countries has tripled.
The World Health Organization has just declared that this is a pandemic.
It goes without saying that 2020 is a year like no other. I think we all have our unique experiences, some shared experiences, but really, we wanted to sort of, you know, capture this moment in time. It'll be interesting for this community to see in, you know, 10 years, just how much the community has changed, the different things and the way the community has come together. We want pictures, we want stories, we want poems, you know, everyone had different experiences. You know, pictures, I think, you know, really describe it, but I, but we also want people to do written word. You know, obviously, we can't include everything, but we want people to suggest anything that, you know, they think really sums up what 2020 means to them. It will be obviously in Council District 12, but it will be a city facility that we bury this in. You just go to CD12.org. February 28th is actually the last date for you to be able to submit something. I know everyone has unique experiences, you know, both good and bad, but I think it's important for us to, you know, always look back on time.
Our feature story this week highlights the Antaeus Theater Company. With COVID-19 putting the kibosh on live performances, the survival of smaller theater troops looks dubious at best, but this theater company decided they would go really old school and with surprisingly successful results. Check this segment on the Zip Code Plays.
Antaeus is a cooperative theater ensemble dedicated to bringing classical theater to Los Angeles, like our current production of You Can't Take It With You. I'll check this out.
What happened when I turned around?
Since COVID happened, we thought, where are we going to be able to tell our stories? Is there anything we can do? Is there anything we can do for us? Is there anything we could do for Los Angeles? Is there anything we could do for people who desperately need art and storytelling?
We began to look at alternate forms of storytelling, and we thought about podcasts and audio plays and the long history of audio dramas.
Once we went into lockdown, the company called me and said, we have this crazy idea. We want to do radio plays.
I feel like the intimacy of listening to a podcast, listening to a story being told by actors in your ear mimics very much the intimate quality of our space. We only have 80 seats, and so you feel like you're right with the actors, and they're telling you a story, and we thought that this format might suit us.
And Bill remembered that the first time we had a chance for our playwrights lab to share their work, and they did a festival of two nights of readings of 10-minute plays called the Zip Code Plays. And Bill said, well, why don't we go back to that?
We asked writers to choose a zip code in Los Angeles that spoke to them for whatever reason. We chose those, they wrote original material for us. We cast actors from within our company, and the plays are like, each one's like a little bonbon that has its own delicious taste, but each one's unique.
My hands, they feel. And I thought statues only came to life in operas and children's books. Their clothing is so odd. And scant, I am most assuredly the only woman wearing a petticoat.
We also have some additional programming around these. We have some tours, and on our website, you can either listen to the tours virtually or when we're allowed to go outside a little bit more, you can take them in person, whether on foot or in your car.
The power of radio, the power of this medium, of just being able to hear a performance and be able to engage sort of on a different level where you, the listener, are creating all of that imagery yourself. And I'm really proud to be able to take part in this theater space and continue that preservation of sort of radio theater.
And at a time when you can't travel, it's so exciting because people over the world can come for a visit virtually to Los Angeles.
In doing classical theater in Los Angeles, sometimes it doesn't allow us to explore our own communities as much as we might like, and concentrating on zip codes and this city and where we live and the communities in which we are all participating was something that's very important to us.
The face of a Kodiak bear and the dimensions of a Tyrannosaurus. And yes, definitely hungry.
So they're available on our website, that's antaeus.org, A-N-T-A-E-U-S. They're also available on Spotify, Apple, wherever you get your podcasts. They're free, each one is only a half hour long, so you can listen to them in one little sitting.
I have never considered myself to be above sin. Indeed, I flogged myself with chains and metal whips I could show you, and I'm more than willing to undergo more.
Learn about textiles with the Center for the Arts Eagle Rock. Tune in to discover your hidden superpower, or try your luck at the Banning House Virtual Escape Room. All this up next on Virtual Things to Do.
Center for the Arts Eagle Rock wants to teach you the medieval Japanese stitching technique called Boro. In their latest workshop, Textile Arts: Mindful Mending, Connie Roman will offer a four-part online class that will teach you to mend, darn, and repurpose clothing. The class is open to anyone 16 years or older. Check out Textile Arts: Mindful Mending. The first class starts Sunday, February 7th at 1:30 p.m. For information on how to register for the class, visit CFAR.org. The LA Public Library invites you to log on for a conversation with Emmy winner and Good Morning America weekend anchor Adrian Bankard. Bankard will sign on with the Central Library to talk about her new book, Your Hidden Superpower. The book examines the profound and positive impact of simple acts of kindness. Your Hidden Superpower: A Conversation with Adrian Bankard will stream live on both Facebook Live and YouTube Live Thursday, February 4th at 5:30 p.m. For more information, visit LAPL.org. Your friends at the Port of Los Angeles invite you to take a virtual trip back to 1880. The Banning Museum's virtual field trips currently brings you the interactive digital escape room. Learn all about Phineas Banning, the father of the Los Angeles harbor, as you gather clues throughout the tour, clues that will hopefully get you back to the 21st century. Try your luck at 18th-century sleuthing as you check out the Banning Museum Digital Escape Room. You can get started on your virtual adventure by following the tour link at thebanningmuseum.org. And that's a look at some virtual things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Natalia Bilbao. From all of us here at Ellie This Week, thank you so much for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at ellicityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube.
When tragedy strikes, it's okay not to be okay.
I know this is tough, but we'll get through it.
We've still got more to come if we're not careful. Los Angeles, city of the angels. We're all in for LA. That's the only way we're going to beat this thing. Thank you, Los Angeles. We love you.
The food?
Yeah.
Good morning, members.
It was great. Thank you.
Mitch is on every day after council.
Guys, I think she's, I think, calling us to order.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, February 2nd. I'm Nury Martinez, the president of the city council. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, present.
Bonin.
Bonin, present.
Buscaino.
Here.
Sadio.
Sadio, here.
De Leon.
Here.
Harris Dawson.
Here.
Corretz.
Present.
Krikorian.
Here.
Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Did you make fresh coffee? No.
Price.
Mr. Sadio, can you please mute yourself? Thank you. Please continue.
Price.
Here.
Ridley Thomas. Rodriguez. Thirteen members present and a quorum, Madam President.
We've now been joined by Mr. Price. Mr. Price, can you confirm you're in our meeting?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fourteen members present and a quorum, Madam President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes of January 27th.
Mr. Blumenfeld moves and Mr. Corretz seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Ramon moves and Mr. Ridley Thomas seconds. Next.
Madam President, today is Tuesday and it's time for the flag salute.
Mr. De Leon, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance this morning?
Thank you much, Madam Presidents. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
There you go, J-Lo.
Nice.
Thank you, Mr. De Leon. Madam Clerk, what's next?
Madam President, would council like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that would be the order. Next.
Thank you. Items one through nine are items noticed for public hearing. Items 10 through 19 are items for which public hearings have been held. A CAO report has been submitted and posted to council file 20-1637 for item 13. Items 20 through 36 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Members, are there, you wish to call any of these items special?
Madam Chair, I'd like to call item, uh, no.
Can you please raise your virtual hand? Thank you. Anyone wishing to call any of these items special? Mr. Buscaino?
19, please.
Is that for questions or do you have an amended motion?
Uh, some questions, potentially an amending motion based on the, um, the response I get.
Thank you. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Uh, number 13 for the purposes of an amendment.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
The amendment is to approve the Plumb Committee report recommendations and the CAO report dated February 1, 2021, which has been uploaded to the council file concurring with those recommendations.
Is there a second?
And that concludes my items.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
That's Ms. Ramon. Okay, members, are there any other items you wish to call special? Because saying none, Madam Clerk, can you let us know what items are available to vote on?
We can vote on items 10 through 12 and 14 through 18.
Okay, let's go ahead and open the roll.
Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Ramon.
Aye.
Ridley Thomas.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on to public comment. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer a comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466 and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. Finally, when you hear the last four digits of your phone number called out, press star six. Let me repeat. Call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466 and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. Finally, when you hear the last four digits of your phone number called out, press star six. Thank you.
To members of the public calling in, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute per item, uh, one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total, and if you wish, one minute for general public comment, please speak on the items first before providing general public comment. We'll tell you when your time's up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic, or if we can't tell whether you're speaking on topic, you'll get one brief warning from me or the president. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic or again stray off topic, the president will cut you off and you'll forfeit the rest of your speaking time and we'll move on to the next speaker. We'll take forty minutes total of public comment. The items that are open for, that are open for public comment are items one through nine and twenty through thirty-six. Finally, for members of the public calling in to speak, as soon as you hear someone address you, you are live in the council meeting. If you're also listening to the council meeting on your computer, channel 35, or other device, please turn down the volume on those devices immediately, both because it'll cause feedback and because there's a time delay. Also, if you're listening on another device, do keep one ear on the phone because when we read off the last four digits of your phone number or other identifying information if you're calling in with a blocked number, you need to hear us in real time so that you can press star six to unmute yourself. So when you hear it, press star six, tell us which items you want to speak on, and we'll tell you how much time you have and it'll be your turn to speak. Thank you, Madam President. We're ready to take public comment.
Thank you. Just go ahead and take the first speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 7719, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
It's Eric Previn, and I'd like to speak on the agenda items as well as the general public comment.
So you have three minutes, three minutes on the items, followed by one minute for general public comment. Please begin, Mr. Previn.
Okay, well, first of all, you know, I think everybody likes the idea of the Los Angeles Conservation Corps. This is a group that Mickey Cantor some years ago put into effect and an army of young people who get paid to do work, uh, you know, in the neighborhood, in the river, and around here. It's, it sounds great, actually. Um, and today we're bumping up on a contract extension something like by 668,000 to this group. We're gonna hand out those funds. Now, I, I know this is gonna come as a surprise, but the problem is that O'Farrell and others who are on the inside with this group, um, they, they play politics, which, you know, is not what you're rooting for in fundraising. And the way they play politics, which is really interesting, is when it comes time for election time, uh, they don't really want to talk to the people except for Mr. O'Farrell and Mr. Krikorian. And the people who bring in the group and sign these contracts to do in their district the work of the good side, which is the side that the incumbents are on, because that's how it works. When a person who, even if they have environmental, um, street cred, who fight hard, who work to expose the real problems with the way our electeds are handling our environment and our, and our, um, nature, they, well, they don't count because the money comes from O'Farrell and that's how we roll. So it's not good. It's not good. It should be, um, you know, it's not about partisan because everybody for a million miles around here seems to be like me, a Democrat. It's about incumbency. Now, when we do, um, reach out to make little contract adjustments, that's how we roll. One, one that came up, uh, today is a company called, um, Counter Intuitivity. Now, here's a great example. Marketing promotional company that does digital titillation and gets everybody excited and what's your, guess who they work for? Well, they won two big prizes for the MRCA. Does that sound familiar? This is a very similar kind of group, like, uh, the, the one we just discussed, that works very closely with the incumbents during the horrifying period when the mayor and Mr. Englander, uh, and Mr. Corretz and Catherine Barker were blaming the homeless, the homeless for the fire in the supposed to pass. It was the MRCA who quickly showed up early and then stayed silent when asked, "Where is this place?" Because they didn't know, though nobody knew, because there was no place. It was a scheme to power wash homeless people off the hillsides from around where they weren't even. It was just a good excuse to get the good-looking firemen in there because it's much more appealing to remove someone with a fireman than with a policeman because firemen and women get a certain amount of trust from the people because we're in a fire area and it's scary. Why they're standing in the parking lot administering vaccines on groupal overtime is a good question. And why, uh, they're now doing, I guess they were doing testing, now they're doing vaccines. Um, you know, I think it's time to veer into my general public comment and just to point out that on City Watch today, you'll find an article written by my brother and I that addresses what I've been talking about, the Friday meetings, and with the way the city council has failed to properly hear from the public. It's called "The pandemic should not be used as a pretext to muffle the voices of the inconvenient public." We're gonna bring a lawsuit if you don't go back to and resume appropriate, regular meeting. So that's my time. And, uh, I wish you the best, but seriously, get it together.
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
Caller with the phone number ending in 4208, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, uh, it's Rob Kwan. I'd like to speak on item 33 and general public comment.
Sure, you have one minute for each. Please begin.
Um, you know, I want to piggyback on the comments about counter-intuity. I think it's interesting that, uh, this contract for CD7, uh, is going to a company whose president gave a max contribution to the council member back when she was running for office. Um, turning to my general public comment, I think, uh, you know, I have to wonder, why was everyone so quiet about Councilmember Englander last week in sentencing? Is it awkward because you are afraid you'd have to say something about John Lee? Uh, speaking of John Lee, it's been nearly a year since you filed a campaign statement for your 2020 campaign. You have missed two semi-annual reports for this campaign and you still have allegedly $116,000 cash in hand that's not accounted for. Uh, I want to highlight LA Administrative Code, Section 24.36B. You are just shy of the 90-day post-election deadline for you to return unused matching funds. Um, so now you're just piling things, uh, ethics violations on top of your original Form 700 that is problematic from your Vegas rump. Uh, I just want to remind you that you're eligible for recall in six weeks. And I want to remind the colleagues that, um, council member leaving stink lingers around all of you. And you should probably grow a spine and speak up about it before, you know, a few years from now, it comes back, back to bite you in the ass.
Thank you, Mr. Kwan.
That's all I got. Have a nice day.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1983, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, Stuart Waldman from VICA. I'm calling to speak on item 19 and general comment.
Go ahead. You have one minute for each.
Thank you. Uh, good morning. I'm Stuart Waldman, president of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, VICA, representing businesses in the San Fernando Valley and city of Los Angeles, calling regarding the hazard pay ordinance that you are all looking at. Uh, we have asked that that, the hazard pay ordinance go to an economic analysis to determine what impact it would have on the city. Uh, but for the most part, one of the things that really concerns us is we don't fully understand why grocery workers aren't getting vaccinated right away. These are people who are seeing people every single day and they should be at the front of the line. Uh, that is a priority. Hazard pay isn't gonna help somebody who gets sick. Uh, that's just punishment. And, you know, this is something that we just don't understand why you're doing. You see that there are repercussions for that, that, uh, costs are enormous for, uh, the companies, the grocery companies, uh, and they have to react. And, you know, unfortunately, I know there's a, a report that says companies have been hugely profitable. Unfortunately, that report was from one quarter. It's not, no longer the case. Uh, those companies have had extreme, enormous costs that have gone up uh, for, uh, employee costs, for safety costs. Uh, so a lot of money is being spent to protect employees. Uh, what we should be talking about is getting these employees vaccinated right away. And in fact, the city isn't, um, you know, paying their own employees who are coming in to work hazard pay. Uh, for the past ten months, eleven months, you have all had, uh, council employees and, and other city workers who come in every day and no one has given them a raise and, and they're in a hazard zone. So, you know, I, I would urge you to, uh, um, live by what you preach and, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waldman. Next speaker, please.
Caller with the phone number ending in 11, sorry, 1556, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Kayla Curting and I'm speaking on item number 19 and general public comment.
You have a minute for each. Please go ahead.
Perfect. Good morning. My name is Kayla and I'm calling with the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, VICA. We urge the city councils to complete a thorough economic and policy analysis before voting on any grocery hazard pay ordinance. We need to know how this will affect workers, consumers, and small grocers. We should know the economic impacts before moving ahead with policies that have the potential to have significant negative consequences. Grocery store workers have been truly on the front lines, ensuring that we have safe and, we have access to safe and reliable food supplies throughout the crisis. And as an acknowledgement of that, grocers have undertaken massive efforts and spent millions of dollars to institute policies that will keep both workers and customers safe. Grocers have also provided workers with bonuses, time off, extra pay, and other benefits in addition to their negotiated pay. A $5-an-hour increase amounts to about 30% of wages. That cost will have to be passed on to consumers in the form of higher grocery costs. We all know that many consumers cannot afford higher costs. Too many in our region and state are struggling to get by as it is. Yesterday, the Kroger company announced the permanent closure of 25% of its stores in Long Beach following the Long Beach City Council ordinance imposing extra pay on grocery stores. These stores who were already struggling were pushed over the edge by increased costs from these policies. This type of action could result in significant grocery store closures in the city of Los Angeles and have a significant loss of jobs. Finally, the city cannot expect these defecating provisions from businesses when they are not themselves providing hazard pay to the countless city employees that are keeping Los Angeles running. VICA thanks our front-line workers but asks the city to reconsider this costly and unnecessary provision. Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1148, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
I'd like to speak on all available items and, uh, general public comment, please.
You have three items, three minutes for the items, followed by one minute for general public comment, Speaker.
Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, apologize to Ms. Autry Martinez. Start the meeting on time, Martinez. Uh, item number 29, uh, removing items from the REAP account. Again, these, these liens placed on people's properties are, uh, onerous and should be reevaluated. Uh, number 31, Dawson, of course, uh, more criminality. Uh, using, uh, neighborhood council funds for beautification. That's the job of the city. Uh, item number 30, Ridley Thomas, under the tutelage of, um, corrupt, um, um, Ridley Uncle Thomas, rather, under the tutelage of, uh, Dawson. Uh, what's, uh, here's a $20,500 contract, uh, making the funds available to the council office budget. We will be watching that. We're watching all of you corrupt LA city, city, uh, sleazy council people. Uh, the mayor's illumination, number 35, uh, $120. Mayor's illumination of City Hall, I, uh, for $120. I suggest you take that $120 and put it with, uh, $7,380. That'll make $7,500 that, um, the Hope Valley Rescue Mission is providing homeless homes, tiny homes, for $7,500 versus, so put that $120 with their $7,380 versus the Los Angeles Sleazy Council's proposal to use $130,000 for an eight-by-eight home for the homeless. This, this is the level of corruption of these incompetent nitwits. It took six months for Martinez to put a mask on her face. Now, look, she has a double mask. Uh, back, back to the, uh, items, uh, it's, it's just incredible, the level of corruption and vote trading that Mr. Gus brought up last, last, last week. Uh, back to, uh, the items, uh, for, um, oh, I'm sorry. I, I lost my place. I'll go to, uh, uh, general public comment if I can, please.
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. Um, I would like, you know, instead of Buscainus taking time, personal time to, uh, talk about people that have passed and his family, don't get me wrong, all glory and honor to the lady that passed, but not you, Buscaino. You're abusing your public, your public privileges. I would like, and you people like to coattail and vampire off of people of the city of Los Angeles by adjourning in memory of deceased individuals. Well, you have nothing to do with their, their accomplishments. You people are murderers. I would like to adjourn in memory of the homeless people that have died in 2020 because of the greed and corruption of the Los Angeles, uh, Sleazy Council by not providing safe and affordable housing and instead using money for campaign contributions to developers and the unions.
Thank you, Speaker.
You people, disgusting.
Caller with the phone number ending in 7186, please press star six.
Hi.
Please state your name and the item.
Yes, my name is Alex and I am, uh, just going to speak on general public comment.
Sure, you have one minute. Please begin.
Thank you. I want to say that I'm shocked that we got 40 minutes of general public comment today because I want to make this board aware that having public comment be less than 30 minutes, not having three meetings a week, and silencing public comments without warning are all in direct violation of the Brown are all in direct violation of the Brown Act, as well as the city council rules. Without a warning, last week you silenced the Latinx speaker who was calling out his representative, but you allow white men, eight minutes, to spew xenophobic dog whistles and call Dr. Ferrer the C-word without any protest. Do you know how triggering that is? If you don't want to hear people call you out, either do your job better or don't hold public office. We can see you talking on camera. We can hear you having your snacks on the mic. Mark, you are my representative, and last week you cut me off at one minute and twenty seconds. Do you think that we're stupid? It's so obvious that Nury and members of this committee don't actually want to hear from the public. So either get your shit together or get ready for a lawsuit. Thank you. That's all my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 6068, please press star six.
Hello?
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, this is Richie Sержenko from People City Council. I'd like to speak on items nineteen, thirty-three, thirty-five, and general public comment, please.
So you have three minutes for the items, followed by one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Yeah, start off with item nineteen. We really shouldn't be listening to Stuart Waldman and the pro-business callers calling in from the Valley. You know, we just saw what happened in Long Beach with the Kroger stores. They're firing workers because of a potential hazard pay raid. Think about what you heard last week from the union workers that are, that are working down at the port. How, how rampant COVID is. That's how it is in every working-class workplace in Los Angeles, including grocery stores. They are essential workers and they're frontline workers. They deserve to be bumped up in the vaccination line, but they also deserve hazard pay. If you, you know, black and brown communities are going to be impacted the hardest, just like in Long Beach. So I would say, you know, ignore Stuart Waldman and pro-business callers. Item thirty-three, I just want to point out, it's funny that the company involved in this item gave the maximum out to Monica Rodriguez. You know, corruption run amok in L.A. City Council. Rob Quan made a great point. You know, council members were very quiet about Mitchell Inglis sentencing, probably because you guys don't want to say anything about John Lee. John Lee is under investigation by the FBI. He's up for recall in six weeks. I hope John Lee is sweating. John, I see you on the screen. Hope you can look up, look the camera in the eyes. The FBI is coming for you, buddy.
Speaker, have you moved on to your general public comment?
I'll go on to general public comment now. I just want to say, you know, how, for the forty-one eighteen motion that you all tried to pass last year, you all pushed that through council, through committee. Mitch and Nury waved it through and got it onto the council agenda immediately. I'm wondering why it's taken so long for the Boninithia motion to commandeer hotels, to use the FEMA money for the hotels. There's a good example in Austin, Texas. They just, they took six million dollars from the police budget, bought a hotel, commandeered hotels, housing, house. That's the kind of thing Los Angeles wants to do. Don't you all care about your public profile? Don't you want to be known as people that actually get shit done? The perfect opportunity. Let's defund the police, let's seize the hotels. Mark Ridley Thomas, stop posting fucking quote graphics of yourself on Twitter and just seize the goddamn hotels, okay? There, there's no reason to delay this any further. This is a serious health crisis. It's almost been a year, and we still have forty-plus thousand people on the streets.
Caller with the phone number ending in 5245, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 5245, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 5545, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 5545, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 4024, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 4024.
Good morning, my thugs.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Good morning, my thugs. I want to speak on all items like nineteen, number twenty-nine.
So you have three minutes for the items.
Number thirty-one, number thirty-five, and public comment. And who's interrupting me? This is a violation of the Brown Act example.
Go ahead, Speaker.
Thank you. Check this. Oh, this is how we roll. Conservation courts playing politics for contributions and fundraising, Mr. O'Ferrero? Seven hundred thousand dollars. And what about the budget man? You don't even know how to count. That's why you lost your bar license? And the MRCA fundraising criminals? You want to blame the homeless for the fires in the valley? Blame John Lee. Yeah, schemes, schemes. Appealing fire department for campaign contributions and fundraising? Give us back our money, Mr. Lee. Unused, watching you of those funds. And soon in six weeks, we get to vote. What about the hazard pay for the analysts? My reaction? My reaction is, we should vaccinate all elderly, all disabled people, and then the rest of the non-disabled population who are not heroes but are being screwed by the higher taxes to pay for groceries. You cause a lot of money troubles on a negligent, negligent impact. Community impact statement costs are twenty-five percent inclusive on grocery stores. FICA, acronym FICA, you put your imagination to it. Mr. Dawson's abuse of monies on item number thirty-one? What's wrong with you, fool? Corruption, thug? Give us back our monies for corruption? And not to mention you, Mr. Chango or Thomas? Again, the mayor's fundraising for sleepy number thirty-four and number thirty-five, Jagger. Sleepy mayor fundraising. Sleazy, sleazy, incompetent nitwit. Why should we pay for an eight-by-eight home? When we should be all improvised into the community by calling the FBI, three-ten, four-seven-seven, six-five-six-five. Stop racketeering and corruption in Los Angeles development.
Speaker, which item are you on? I'm confused now.
I'm not talking about number thirty-five regarding nitwit eight-by-eight housing, sir. And regarding motels, hotels, public living accommodations, a short number of guestrooms and private lodging facilities must be accessible due to the COVID pandemic and crisis, you jackass. Including sanitary facilities, called restrooms in English, Jagger. Public rooms, recreational facilities, and all lodging must be completely.
Do you want to move on to your general public comment, Speaker? You want to move on to your general?
General public comment. The political arena is often abusive, Mr. Chango Ridley Thomas, Uncle Tom, and you must learn to not prohibit issues that unhilently are robust and wide open and include venomic, caustic, sometimes very unpleasant shots to attack on niggers. That's why Hope Land Security and the FBI at three-ten, four-seven-seven, six-five-six-five must investigate John Lee, you criminal, and your display at the what? Las Vegas gambling fund with Jose Luis Wezar and that fucking criminal, fourteen-month-Englishlander, depression piece of shit. You don't have depression, motherfucker. I do. You're a fucking corrupted politician, crybaby little bitch. And you assholes, you mommy, wear your mask.
Thank you, Speaker.
And you must apologize to Ms. Autry.
Thank you, Speaker. Your time is up.
You racist and pathetic bitches. Thank you.
Next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 8742, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Sarah Wiltong, and I'd like to speak on agenda item nineteen.
Sure, you have a minute. Please begin.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Wiltong, and I'm contacting you on behalf of BizFed. We are an alliance of over two hundred business organizations who represent over four hundred and fifty thousand employers in Los Angeles County, and we're here to express our concerns for the city council's consideration of hazard pay. As you have already heard, two major grocery stores in the City of Long Beach just announced their closure as a result of their recent adoption of hazard pay. While we believe our grocery store workers are on the front lines, expecting stores to absorb an additional thirty percent increase in payroll costs and not anticipate the economic consequences of such actions is irresponsible. Struggling stores will have several choices. Either they will pass the additional costs on to consumers, reduce hours, lay off workers, or, in the case of Long Beach, close permanently. It is important that the City of Los Angeles understand the full weight of what they are proposing before moving forward. As such, we strongly suggest the city council consider an economic impact study before moving forward with any draft ordinance. Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1676, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, this is Kevin. I'd like to speak general public comment, please.
Sure, you have a minute. Please begin.
All right. So once again, it's Tuesday, and that means the residents of the country's second-largest city have gone a full six days without their city's extremely powerful legislative body meeting during a time of multiple overlapping and existential crises. And so it's not only a complete abdication of your job responsibilities, it's also against the city charter, to which all fifteen of you swear an oath. Article two, section two forty-two, Conduct of Business, subsection A, says the council shall hold regular meetings at least three days each week. I'm not a lawyer, but that seems pretty clear-cut to me. Does the city really want to deal with another lawsuit over stupid shit like this? Or is this how you want to spend the rest of your term as council president, Nury Martinez? Defending your continual failure to uphold the basic duties of your job? I don't think so. Hold the damn Friday meetings. And why don't you just apologize to Ms. Autry while you're at it? I don't know what all that's about, but at least that one guy will have some peace. And fuck you, Wayne Spiller. I have my time.
Thank you, Spiller.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 7543, please press star six.
Yes, good morning. Good morning. Thank you for having me here. Calling to make a general comment, please.
Sure, you have a minute. Please begin.
Thank you. Yes. As a San Fernando Valley resident, I would like for us to get more attention, more better services because it seems to me that many of your callers are from L.A., and they seem to get more attention than San Fernando Valley residents. And I feel like we're being left out. I'm also disappointed that many of the callers are using profanity. They're acting childish, and they're clogging up their phone lines. We have to do a better job of monitoring and regulating who's calling because there are many good people out there who want to make a public comment. And every single week, these same people keep clogging up the phone lines. They keep making these harassing calls, these profanity, and I'm sick of it already. So we have to address homelessness, crime, poverty, whether create jobs. We have to work together as a team to move forward. We cannot longer be fighting among each other. I'm so sick of it already. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Speaker. Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 8408, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 8408, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, hi. My name is Peter. I'd like to speak on all items and general public comment.
So you have three minutes for the items, followed by one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to start off by talking about streetlights. I mean, it seems pretty innocuous, but honestly, in the middle of a pandemic, when there's a lot of pressing issues facing the city, I just sort of wonder whether or not it strikes any of you as, at least disappointing, that so much of the agenda is given over to the piecemeal funding of our civic infrastructure and the fact that our civic revenues rely on these and that you have to spend your time working on them. It's just fundamentally disappointing, and I think speaks to the broader civic dysfunction of our city, that honestly, this is what you're spending your time on instead of, you know, seizing hotels, taking advantage of hundred percent FEMA funding to get people off the street while, you know, it's raining and people are dying. You know, maybe if we added an extra Friday meeting, you guys might be able to get a little bit more of this sort of stuff done. You know, I'd also like to address some of the ghouls from VICA who are calling in. You know, it's really astounding to hear anybody oppose hazard pay during the middle of this pandemic, especially so when it's so remarkably disingenuous. You know, Kroger has, in the course of the year, this is the company that just closed those two stores in Long Beach. They initiated a one billion-dollar stock buyback program while ending their hazard pay months ago. So what we're seeing is not a reaction to hazard pay in the City of Long Beach. What we're seeing is vindictive action taken to stifle these sorts of actions being taken in other places, coming at the expense of, you know, the most vulnerable communities that need grocery stores, that need people to be paid more. And so just, you know, fuck you, Stuart Waldman, fuck you, VICA. You people just need to like, just get out of our civic life, please. Yeah, and going on from there, you know, John Lee, what are you doing, buddy? I think everybody's pointed it out really well today. But, you know, it's only going to get bigger. And as they're pointing out, we've only got a couple more weeks to wait before your recall's coming. And the silence from this council, from Nury and refusing to remove him from committees is honestly pretty, pretty deafening at this point. You know, you guys are responsible for how you're viewed in the city.
Thank you, Speaker.
And, you know, the ethical actions.
Caller with the phone number ending in 7960, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Good morning. My name is Carlos Leon. I'm here for general public comments.
You have a minute. Please begin.
Hi, thank you. Hi, everyone. Good morning. My name is Carlos Leon. I'm the leader of the organization Committee Coalition with Push L.A. I'm here to make sure that we push the file two-zero-dash-zero-eight-seven-five regarding alternatives to enforcement in traffic stops and to make sure that that gets put into voting in this council meeting, please. Nury Martinez, you pushed this into a committee. This is just prolonging the process. We've talked about this last year, over and over and over again. Our committee in South LA right now is dealing with an epidemic. There's so much pain, trauma, and death. We are seeing the results of decades of inequity with policies and injustice for its black and brown communities. We cannot wait for more deaths to happen, for more shootings to happen, for more people to suffer. We need this to go into the Department of Transportation immediately. But we urgently hope that we can act now and put the alternatives to law enforcement to make sure that the Department of Transportation is the one leading with traffic stops and not the police department, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 6140, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, good morning. My name is Leslie Johnson, and I wanted to give public comment on council file number two-zero-dash-zero-eight-seven-five.
Go ahead.
Thanks. Again, my name is Leslie Johnson. I'm with the Push L.A. Coalition. And as you know, today, as you probably know, today is Groundhog Day. And if you've seen that movie with Bill Murray, you know it's about the same day happening over and over and over again. Well, when it happened to Bill Murray in the movies, it was funny, but in real life, it's not. And the same day is happening over and over and over again to black and brown drivers across the city who experience trauma, humiliation, abuse, and violence up to the point of death in some cases at the hands of the police during traffic stops. We were really hopeful during, in the summer, when this motion was to report on alternative models and methods that do not rely on armed law enforcement to achieve transportation policy objectives was first introduced in June. Now, more than seven months later, we are beyond frustrated by the council's inaction on a motion that could help us address the scourge of state violence on black and brown communities. Our people require urgent action by their city council, and we demand that this motion be agendized. And we demand that this motion be agendized for a vote by the full council so the mandated action to LA DOT can begin, instead of being sent yet to another committee, the motion already passed in the Ad Hoc Committee on Police Reform on October 23, 2020.
Thank you, Speaker.
And so we really hope that there can be movement here. We were really excited about the potential to make change, and we're just...
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 7491, please press star six.
Yes, hello?
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Rachel Torres, I'd like to speak on Item 19 and general public comment.
So you have a minute for each, please begin.
Thank you. Good morning, my name's Rachel Torres, I'm with UFCW Local 770. We want to express our strong support for an emergency temporary ordinance of $5 hazard pay for retail and grocery and drug retail in the city of Los Angeles. We thank the Economic Development Committee for your thorough discussion this past week. Many grocers and drug retailer stores, including Kroger, Target, and Walmart, agreed to pay LA workers a $2 hazard pay increase in March, only to end it six weeks later because of the second, right before the second and third surge of the pandemic. Meanwhile, grocery and drug retail companies seen their net earnings skyrocket this year. Kroger, for example, reported a 15.8 increase in sales and net earning increase of just over 100% in the first three quarters of 2020. In December and January alone, over 2,900 UFCW members had become infected. To date, over 3,500 members have contracted COVID-19. 10 members have died, five have passed away in the last month. On the first day of Black History Month, Kroger, owner of Ralphs and Food For Less, followed a terrible model to close two stores serving black and brown communities in North Long Beach. This is direct retaliation, a capital strike, in which companies decide they won't work, while workers at Kroger have never called a strike during the worst working conditions of the pandemic. It's meant to harass and intimidate other cities from taking action. Shame on Kroger, who has enjoyed stock buybacks and billion-dollar revenue while working people eat through food banks and don't have access to the vaccine yet. When there's an outbreak at Ralphs and Canoga Park, or Vons in North Hollywood, or Rided in South LA, workers must put in extra, more arduous hours to compensate for the increased workload. Their commitment to keep the community fed should be honored. This is the right policy for this unprecedented moment. Grocery and drug retail workers deserve hazard pay, large chains can afford it. The Brookings Institute conducted a nationwide study on the high profit margin and infection rates for these national companies, and made the strong recommendation for hazard pay. We encourage less...
Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 8386, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Latia Sutel, I'm a member of Community Coalition. I'm calling for Council File 20-0875 and public comment.
You have a minute for each, please begin.
The Los Angeles Department of Transportation needs to create a report on the alternative models and methods that do not rely on armed law enforcement to achieve transportation policy objectives. This motion was supposed to go to city council to be voted upon, but has been sent yet to another committee meeting, which seems like it's an attempt to halt or slow it down. I express the urgency and why this motion needs to be passed and why this report needs to be created. It is not necessary to have armed law enforcement to achieve transportation policy objectives. Black and brown communities are far too often being harassed by law enforcement, experienced police brutality, and being murdered during routine traffic stops. I urge you, this motion, to be passed and to end armed law enforcement to achieve transportation policy objectives.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 4232, please press star six. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Yes, this is Jackie Silvers, I'm calling with the Los Angeles Chamber, speaking on Item 19.
Please go ahead, do you have a minute?
Thank you. Calling with the LA Chamber on behalf of its member grocers, larger business community, and local stakeholders, because we believe we can protect and support essential grocery workers without increasing costs during a pandemic-induced economic recession. We believe more time is needed to conduct an economic assessment to assess consequences of extra pay increase motions before causing unintended consequences for our grocers, their employees, and the community that relies on them to feed their families. Grocery store workers are indeed frontline heroes, making sure Californians have access to safe, reliable food and supplies. Grocers have taken significant steps to protect these workers from the pandemic, including providing masks, other PPE, instituting daily wellness and temperature checks, dividers, enhancing sanitation, cleaning protocols, investing billions in extra pay, limiting store capacity, and the like. Extra pay mandates will not make grocery workers any safer, but they should be getting vaccinated, that should be a priority. Grocery stores, as I've said, have provided extra pay and benefit enhancements to support grocery workers. This includes increased hourly pay by an average of an extra $2 to $3 per hour, spot bonuses.
Thank you, Speaker. Alright, members, that concludes our public comment, let's go ahead and move on and vote on the following items. Let's go ahead and vote on Items 1 through 9, and Items 20 through 36. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, if I may, Madam Chair. The public hearing is now closed for Items 1 through 9. The tabulation of ballots shall take place in space 300 of 555 Ramirez Street on Wednesday, February 3 at 10:00 a.m. To access the live stream, join Zoom meeting ID 953-8628-4393. Passcode PROP218, lowercase p-r-o-p-two-one-eight. Public announcement of the tabulation of ballots and consideration of the final ordinances will take place at City Council on Tuesday, February 23, 2021. Thank you. Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Aye.
De Leon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Coretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Ramon.
Aye.
Ridley Thomas.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
15 ayes, this item is all adopted.
Okay, let's move on to Item 13, this was amended by Mr. Harris Dawson and seconded by Ms. Ramon. Go ahead, let's go ahead and call the vote on Item 13.
Thank you. Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Aye.
De Leon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Coretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Ramon.
Aye.
Ridley Thomas.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
15 ayes, this item is adopted as amended.
Yes, we did.
Okay, let's move on to Item 19, this was called special for questions by Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Madam President, and members, thank you to the Economic Development Committee for moving this forward. Let me be first to say to the grocery store workers that I frequent in my district, particularly at the Vons up the street from me, I thank them and recognize their work that they're doing, day in, day out, as frontline workers, and they have, hasn't, they have not stopped since day one, since the pandemic hit our streets here in Los Angeles. Moving forward, members, I think it's also critically important to recognize the other essential low-paid frontline workers, like the janitors cleaning our hospitals, truck drivers, those in the goods movement sectors, even our airport workers, our factory workers, that are coming in to work day in and day out. Workers, grocery workers clearly are our heroes and heroes. But I also feel that we should consider other low-paid essential workers to give them a hero's pay as well. And I'll be introducing a motion with Council President Nury to move on that effort. One concern I had, and maybe the CLA can respond with the question I had, maybe the Economic Development Committee did address this. I know this is more of a broad approach, I'm looking at grocery stores across the city with over 300 employees. You know, members, you know, I represent Watts and South Los Angeles community that's been deemed a food desert. We have worked tirelessly to bring in quality grocery stores, like we've done at the new Jordan Down development with Smart and Final. One thing that we need to recognize, that if we move on this ordinance, how is this ordinance going to impact disadvantaged communities of color, particularly in the South Los Angeles area where it's been identified as food desert? So wondering if the CLA can look into that, or if indeed the Economic Development Committee already addressed those issues and those concerns. Can I have the CLA report to that?
Yes, you want to, CLA, you're asking for a report back on that?
I would like that, yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
And that's all I have.
Is there a second?
Second. Thank you.
Thank you, by Mr. O'Farrell. Anything else you wish to add, Mr. Buscaino?
That's it, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Madam President, I look forward to hearing that report back as well, if we can cast the safety net wider. I'm very interested in supporting that as well. Colleagues, grocery store workers do not have the luxury of working from home. They interact daily with people from all walks of life, who depend on them for food, medications, and other essentials. But for the most part, these workers have little control of their own work environment as it relates to customer interactions. Things like air circulation and adequate access to COVID preventative measures on the job. Many workers in other sectors of our economy can and do work from home. But our essential grocery store workers continue to show up day after day, in person, to make sure that we all have access to these essentials, so that we can stay safer at home. These workers deserve to be fairly compensated, especially in an industry that has seen its profits increase during the pandemic, for continuing to put themselves at greater risk on the job, and by extension, real-life health risks to their families in order to provide a necessary service for everyone else. Colleagues, I ask for your aye-votes so that we can continue to support this essential workforce during this incredibly challenging time. And just a quick word on Kroger, because I know that they've mentioned that they're gonna, or they're committed to closing two of the supermarkets in Long Beach, since Long Beach approved their hazard pay ordinance. So I'd like to highlight Kroger in particular, a publicly traded company on Wall Street that paid out $547 million in shareholder dividends in 2020 alone. Some of the callers have mentioned their stock buybacks in 2020 were at $1.3 billion. They reported, Kroger, reported an increase in profits of nearly 100% in their third quarter earnings from 2019 to 2020, according to an article in the Detroit Free Press in December. And for anyone who wants to research this on their own, there's lots of news about Kroger's increasing value during the pandemic. So this isn't about, you know, slamming Wall Street, but it is about putting additional oversight and regulating capitalism, especially as it relates to the workers who put themselves on the front lines every day and are seeing none of the benefits of these increased profits. So colleagues, I urge an aye-vote so that we can get these workers the hazard pay that they deserve. Thank you.
Mr. Sadio?
Madam Chair, thank you for hearing this matter. Let me note that in a city of low-wage workers, in a city of a service economy, all these workers deserve hazard pay. We are in the depths of this pandemic, and over 400,000 Americans have lost their lives, and work is now a life-and-death situation. So I think we need to be really thoughtful about how we approach this. I'll attach myself to the comments of the previous speakers. But I also want us to be nuanced about this. I worked in this industry, and there was a time period, people talk about food deserts, but there was a time period when there weren't food deserts, when there were local grocery stores, before they pulled up and headed out to suburbia and expurbia. And what's left behind is not the same as what left. And so I want us to be nuanced when we get this report back. I want to see a type of scale, there's a difference between a Walmart, or Costco, or Krogers, where our communities go to get essential goods, and local mom-and-pops, smaller supermarkets that provide a whole array of services that otherwise don't get provided. And so I know that when these major chain supermarkets left, that there were many immigrant families who took up that challenge and continued to provide services in low-income communities of color, communities, where not only do they provide the food for the food desert, but also other services, and we need to acknowledge that. Banking services, you know, remits are a major part of the life experience of the immigrants who live in this city. They provide those services, it's a whole range of services that are provided by mom-and-pops and neighborhoods. And so, just like we have to distinguish between major companies that own apartments and people who own duplexes, we can't have a one-size-fits-all. We have to be nuanced about this and make sure that, in trying to ensure that these workers are treated with the dignity and respect they deserve, that they do in fact still have a job to provide that for them. So I want a report that looks at all these, first of all, in the retail business, looks at all the employers, the Walmarts, the Coscos, the Krogers, the bigger companies, and the smaller ones. And then also looks at the sectors of our economy where people cannot, as we talked about, the work from home. You can't go and clean somebody else's home from your home. You can't care for other people's kids from your home. There's a whole range of service work that needs to be looked at, and we need to do all that we can for those people who are putting their lives in danger to serve the community. Thank you.
Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, we heard this item in the Economic Development and Jobs Committee last week, and I'm proud to say that it passed unanimously. I think this is a no-brainer. We should be providing grocery and drug retail workers in LA, who have been on the front line since the beginning of this pandemic, with some form of hazard pay. For almost a year now, we've demanded so much, without justly compensating these employees for all their sacrifice and the dangers that they have to face, to keep our families nourished and healthy during the worst public health crisis of our time. Putting them in this position as COVID-19 cases and deaths continue to surge without any kind of hazard pay is not only morally wrong, but I think is just disrespectful of all efforts. And while some companies have taken it upon themselves to give additional compensation... And while some companies have taken it upon themselves to give additional compensation, many have not. Stores are making record profits at this time, many up 30% or more in sales. And so the argument that this is going to cause stores to close down, I think, is unlikely. If the stores are shutting, I don't think it's because of this proposal, they could last up to 120 days, which is probably the amount of time we would have to wait to conduct an economic analysis, which, by the way, has already been done by businesses. These workers are in danger now. They need hazard pay now. I only wish we could have provided it to them sooner. Colleagues, the $5 hazard pay on top of an hourly wage shows these frontline workers, many of whom are people of color, that we recognize the elevated risks that they take every time they go to work, and we're taking bold steps towards ensuring that fairness and economic justice prevail. It's the right thing to do, and will positively impact the lives of thousands of workers and their families. So colleagues, I thank you, and I too ask for your eye vote.
Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to say I know the folks that work in supermarkets, none of them signed up with the expectation that they would be heroes and that they would be risking their lives to do their jobs. But they have, and some of them have lost them. Supermarkets, not all have had the proper protocols throughout this pandemic. Many, many people have gotten COVID as a result, and certainly their modest pay that they were receiving before should be supplemented by this step. I agree with those who have said, well, they're not the only ones, so rather than not taking this step for them, I think we should look at other areas where we want to supplement. I think Mr. Sadio makes a reasonable point, though. My first job out of high school was working in a supermarket, in a small independent mom-and-pop. That market shut down a number of years ago because it's already very difficult for those to make it. So it may be reasonable to look at some of the smallest mom-and-pops and consider exempting them from this, not because those workers don't deserve the money as well, but because they may not be able to survive with the extra cost. So let's at least take a look, as Mr. Sadio suggested, but certainly the Krogers of the world are not in that circumstance. They absolutely can afford this increase, they absolutely should be paying this increase, and if they shut down stores, it's just out of spite, it's not because they will struggle to survive because they pay their employees, they well-deserve $5 an hour extra as hazard pay. This is a really positive and important step, and I thank my colleagues for their support on this.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Thank you, Madam President, pleased to speak in support. Thank you, Mr. Committee Chairman, for your insights. It's clear to me that our city's frontline essential workers are the most vulnerable among us. Madam President, thousands of workers, literally thousands of workers and their families, remain at risk as we speak of infection, death against the backdrop of this extraordinary set of circumstances, the hazards that it presents physically, mentally, and otherwise. We call it COVID-19, and it is nothing short of completely devastating. Many of these workers face grave risk, we know this, their health on a daily basis, often for low wages, and might have punctuate the point by saying without hazard pay, without adequate compensation. Unless we were to argue that this is essentially what the market would bear, we should reclaim our sense of what equity is about. This is where equity and the equitable distribution of resources comes to bear. And current state policy doesn't put them towards the front of the line to receive a vaccine, even though they are often most at risk. Again, a dimension of not only economic justice, but a question of healthcare equity as well. And so, Madam President, the extreme and often unequal sacrifices shouldered by low-wage frontline workers requires our careful and immediate attention. And I think we have to make policy, make policy decisions like this fully conscious, in other words, with our eyes wide open. An economic analysis is indeed prudent, Madam President, to understanding the full effects of such an ordinance and therefore be prepared to embrace the consequences or the implications of our decision-making processes. So let's be clear, our frontline grocery and retail workers are essential workers, and they need and deserve nothing less than a living wage in the midst of this extraordinary set of circumstances, nothing like this that we've seen before, and I pray that we will see nothing like it again. But for now, at least, we can move forward in our deliberations to try to do justice to those who work on our behalf to make sure the quality of our collective lives is better, and they do it at great personal sacrifice. Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Rahm.
Thank you so much, Council President. I just wanted to say a couple of things. One, to, in response to some of the other council members who've spoken about issues facing smaller groceries, mom-and-pop grocery stores, the way that this ordinance is structured, I believe that these stores are already excluded from this particular version of the motion. And so I just wanted to set those fears at ease. And I also did want to say that in the committee where this was discussed, even though we voted to put a report to study the economic impacts of this, given how severe the pandemic is right now, given the risks that grocery workers are taking, we, in the committee, discussed the need to move this ordinance along, parallel to the report, not waiting for the report first, and then instituting the ordinance later. So I just wanted to push for that similar urgency from the council today. I also wanted to just say two other things. One is that we received a number of letters in support of the ordinance to our office from groups across the spectrum who are fighting for the rights of workers and for a more just Los Angeles, including neighborhood councils, groups like LA Voice, CLU, Chirla, the Filipino Worker Center, UFCW, Pacoima Beautiful, so many groups have spoken up and reached out to us in favor of this ordinance, and I just wanted their words to be reflected in today's discussions. And finally, I just wanted to say, you know, we talk a lot about vulnerability, I use that word all the time, and I think there is no more visceral map of vulnerability than in looking at where COVID has hit across the city. We saw that map in the New York Times a few days ago, and it was just astounding to me. And I think what we cannot do is to look at that map and to look ahead at what is to come without doing some prep work, to make sure that the vulnerability faced by workers who are on the front lines of this pandemic, who have faced job loss, illness, and death, are not in 10 months' time then facing the wave of evictions that everyone is fearing will come. And so I think we have work to do, we have to take lessons from this moment, and to look ahead at what will protect us going forward, and to be proactive about it, to be preparatory about it, and to do that work before those issues come up. So I just thank you so much for this time, and yes.
Thank you. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Madam President. You know, colleagues, we absolutely need to recognize that our grocery store workers are our heroes. I think we've had a lot of different things come before us to take, for ordering grocery stores, to take precautions to protect their workers, those are things I think we all voted for unanimously. Things like this, I'm not worried, so much worried about the bigger-name chains, we're talking about 300 employees, we're talking about organizations, I mean, about small markets who have taken the place of some of these larger markets in, not necessarily my community, but in disadvantaged communities throughout Los Angeles. And they've seen, I know there's this story about how, you know, everyone's seeing these great amount of profits, you know, they've had to take precautions against this, all the different supply chains have gone up. I, myself, family of four, you know, we felt the raise, the rise in prices of groceries throughout this last year. I can't even imagine families who are in poverty, who have three, four, five, six members of their families, dealing with these increases in prices and what this may mean to them. Or we often talk about the food deserts that are in disadvantaged communities, and now I'm worried about, the bigger stores have left. Now, these smaller chains of five, six, seven stores have moved in, they employ more people at full-time than some of the bigger stores, they are part of their communities, they employ people in their community, they haven't had the nimbleness to switch to online, you know, online shopping like the bigger stores, and I'm really worried about losing those size stores. Now, my concern is not the Krogers of the world. When we talk about, you know, putting in safety measures, right now, 300 is just, that number doesn't exempt, it exempt only the smallest of markets, but, you know, some of the mid-sized chains that are really going to be affected by this, who do so much good in their communities, that's where I'm really worried about the unintended consequences of an ordinance like this. And so I hope that economic report, when it comes back to us, really focuses on those size stores, and maybe what we can do to exempt maybe the mid-level stores, you know, whether the Krogers of the world are just doing it out of spite or not, those are real jobs that are lost. And I just don't want to see that happen in our communities, and I don't want there to see that further, that inability to get what we always talk about, fresh produce, you know, meals that aren't from fast-food restaurants. And that's where my concern lies in this type of ordinance. So, you know, I hope, I really hope that economic analysis not only takes a look at how it's going to affect all the different sides, but really that those mid-level grocery store markets that I think are going to be greatly affected by this, and we may see shutdown, and not in my community, because I don't, you know, I have big-name stores, I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about the communities that are throughout Los Angeles that are going to be affected by this ordinance, by this ordinance passing, and stores having to, you know, endure a 33% increase in overhead costs, and they already, you know, go on a razor-thin margin, and that's where my worry lies today, colleagues. So I just ask that when we have that, you know, that we place special, close attention, and that we're all focusing, you know, we all have focus on the smaller stores, but also on those mid-range stores as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Madam President, for calling on me, and thank you, and Mr. O'Farrell, and Mr. Price, and Mr. Corretts for introducing this motion. I think this is an important step for Los Angeles to take. It's consistent with the history of this city, which 25 years ago was one of the first in the nation to create a living wage, which then it applied not just to those doing business with the city, but also to those in and around the airport. It's consistent with being the first big city in this country to institute a $15 minimum wage, it's consistent with the track record of this city and of this council, and I'm eager to see us do this today. Just last week, on the 25th, there was a headline that said, "Workers Lost $3.7 trillion in Earnings During the Pandemic." A day later, there was a headline that said, "Billionaires Made $3.9 trillion During the Pandemic." The economy is broken, our economic system is broken, people like Kroger are getting rich, and people throughout Los Angeles, our essential workers are being hurt. And while those who are working, excuse the noise in the background, there's a music class going on simultaneously in my dining room, those who are on the front lines at Ralph's, at Kroger, are still working, but they are facing significant risk of exposure, risk that they can bring home to their families. The hazard pay is the least we can do. There are many who also should be covered, and we should do that, but that should not be a reason to hold up or stall today. This is the least we can do, and we can do more tomorrow, and I thank you and the other cosponsors for their leadership in bringing this forward.
Did you say you're having music class in your home?
Yes, we've moved from the guitar to the drums, so I think it's best for you to go on mute right now.
I love it. Mr. Kerkorden?
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you, colleagues, for a really thoughtful, insightful discussion. And I just want to piggyback a little bit on Mr. Bonin's comments, because, you know, a few decades ago, in Los Angeles, a person with a high school education could get a job that paid a reasonable wage, could save some money, eventually save enough to buy a house, and send their kids to college. And, you know, we've seen how that has so dramatically changed, not just here in Los Angeles, but throughout the country. And, you know, at virtually every meeting, we have people come and speak a public comment and demand that the City Council of Los Angeles do something about the people who are suffering in this economy, and that's absolutely understandable. The truth is that people are suffering in this economy, not because of things that the City Council does or does not do, but because we have a fundamentally broken economic system now in our country that has caused immense disparity of wealth, an increasing disparity of wealth, so that the very wealthiest in our country are getting much wealthier at the time, at the very same time when that same person that I described earlier, that person who graduates from high school and looks for a job, cannot possibly hope to even rent an apartment on the wages that'll be received from that one job. So it is important that this city has set the standard by increasing our minimum wage with an ordinance, by the way, that set the standard for the state of California to then adopt, using our model, in which President Biden is now asserting it should be national policy. So it's important that we take steps like this, and that much is, I agree with the Chair, absolutely a no-brainer. The reason that I asked in committee that we have the report back from the CLA prior to enacting the ordinance is because of the points that were raised by Mr. Sadio and Mr. Ridley Thomas and others about the fact that when we make policy like this, nuances do matter, and we need to make sure that we get it right, and we need to make sure that we don't cause unintended harm. For example, as I understand it, I'm not, just from what I've read, the Long Beach ordinance does not capture Walmart, because not enough of Walmart's sales are ordinance does not capture Walmart, because not enough of Walmart's sales are related to grocery work. So if, now, I haven't verified that. I don't know if that's, that's in fact the case. But one thing I want to have reported back is to ensure that the Walmarts and the Targets of the world are encompassed in an ordinance, at the same time that we're not unduly hurting, you know, small independent chains that, you know, may be the very stores that we force into closure. So those are the sorts of things that we're going to need to look at when this comes back. What is the appropriate amount? Is it $4 in Long Beach? Is it $5 as we're proposing? Or is it some other sum? Those are the sorts of things that I think we ought to have deeper discussion about. But we shouldn't delay the preparation of the ordinance. We should have the ordinance before us to be able to have a thoughtful discussion about what that ordinance will in fact do when we vote on it. So that's why I asked for the report back on a simultaneous track. We'll have an opportunity to have the deeper discussion about those nuances when the ordinance comes back. But I think the CLA report should reflect all of the issues that have been raised by each of us in this discussion, so that we can have that kind of thoughtful discussion at that time. So in the meantime, I ask that we move forward with this, and I would ask for your I-vote.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Oh, Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I just want to congratulate the Chairman of the Committee and the President of the Council for bringing this forward and bringing it forward quickly, responding to the crisis as we're in it. These grocery workers, as many folks have indicated, are the folks who've not taken a single day off since the beginning of the pandemic. They've been in the line of fire ever since. I also wanted to comment and sort of add to the comments, because I appreciate the amount of concern there is about the lack of groceries in low-income communities of colors and food deserts and all the rest. And I would just suggest that the wages of workers or the ability to make a profit is a very small part of why grocery stores have abandoned communities of color and effectively implemented food apartheid in places like Los Angeles and cities across the country. It isn't a question of making a profit, it's how much of a profit you can make. And so I think in these discussions, a lot of times, the workers' salaries are looked at as a cost, but we don't look at the compensation of the executives as a cost. So I would suggest to you that all of these grocery chains, the big ones, their CEOs and the people in the C-suite, they're getting hazard pay, except they're not exposing themselves to any hazard. And it's only when the question of pay for workers comes up that the things like the bottom line gets looked at. And so I think, you know, whether Kroger has, Kroger has been a bad actor long before Long Beach. They've been closing stores in South LA practically my entire life. The last time a store opened in South LA was some 25 years ago on the corner of Adams and Vermont. So I, you know, I think when we look at this industry, we should not be hoodwinked into believing that because they have to pay their workers, they somehow can't do business. These are human beings. They make choices, and they make choices to make themselves richer. And we have to intervene on behalf of the people that we represent. So again, I thank everyone for all of their concern. And I invite you to be part of the struggle to hold groceries accountable over the long term, to make sure we get equitable distribution of food. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. I think you and I have witnessed what these food deserts have done to our communities through all of our work in our respective communities. So thank you for pointing that out. Members, I also want to thank the co-presenters on this motion, Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Price, and Mr. Corretts, and our cosigners, Mr. Ridley Thomas and Mr. Sadio, for your support. Back in December, I believe, the LA Times reported that grocery stores and large retail stores were the epicenter of the COVID spike that we saw, mostly because these are indoor environments and people have a very hard time social distancing. And they stay in close proximity to each other and prolong their contact. And so one of the things that, that I remember from reading that article was a food for less location where an employee had worked for more than 70 hours that week because her coworkers were out sick with COVID, working more than 70 hours a week. What this has done, not only is it a huge physical risk, but I also believe it takes an incredible mental toll in the person. So I know that during this pandemic, we've talked about winners and losers. And this pandemic has caused great economic devastation to so many of our communities, mostly women and people of color, and many who work in these grocery stores. And grocery stores have made huge profits, and I think you've all spoken to that. So employees at grocery stores are some of, who we really should consider are really true heroes, because they don't have the luxury of staying home and working from home or zooming, you know, into their job to make ends meet. So grocery stores have made millions and millions of dollars during this crisis, and, and it's due to the hard work of their employees, who put their lives at risk every single day for all of us. So I think it's time for these companies to acknowledge that and fairly compensate their employees for their essential work every single day. So members, I appreciate the input and the report backs that have been asked. And I ask for your I-vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld?
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino?
Aye.
Sadio?
Sadio, aye.
De Leon?
Aye.
Harris Dawson?
Yes.
Corretts?
Aye.
Krikorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
O'Farrell?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Ramon?
Aye.
Ridley Thomas?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Fifteen ayes. This item is adopted as amended.
Okay, Madam Clerk, what's next?
Council has motions for posting and referral. Motions will be posted on the City Clerk's website shortly after the meeting for the public's viewing. To subscribe to receive copies of today's council motions to your email, please visit clerk.lacity.org.
Okay, those have been posted and referred. Members, are there any announcements? You see no announcements? Any adjourned motions? Mr. Blumenfeld?
Thank you. Colleagues, today I ask that we adjourn in memory of Myra Reifman, who passed away on January 22nd, 2021. Sadly, she passed away after a brief but fierce battle with cancer. She was a glass-ceiling buster. She was an award-winning newscaster. She was funny. She was politically astute. And she was a friend and a supporter. Like me, she was a member of the Howard Berman Alumni Club. She worked for him when he was in the Assembly, whereas I worked for him when he was in Congress. But we shared that bond. My heart goes out to her, her husband, Irv, who was a friend, and their entire family. Myra Lynn Scott Schiff Reifman was born in Minneapolis on June 19th, 1942, to Arthur and Rena Schiff. She graduated from the University of Minnesota, magna cum laud, with a degree in journalism. Subsequently, she earned a master's degree from the Fletcher School of Law and Diplomacy at Tufts, and went on to an internship at the Voice of America, working for famed director Edward R. Murrow. Seeking an on-camera career in journalism, she applied for positions at more than 40 television stations. Only nine replied, five stating, "They don't hire women." Undeterred, she persisted, ultimately landing a job at KXTV in Sacramento, whereas Myra Scott, she produced, co-anchored, or appeared on three news broadcasts per day. She went on to produce and appear on news programs right here on KNBC and Channel 9. And she was exceptionally proud of being the first female newscaster to appear on air in Sacramento and Minneapolis. Her work won multiple awards over the years, including three consecutive local Emmys. Los Angeles Magazine once called Myra's segments, they said they were the best feature stories on local television, acknowledging her in-depth interviews with many prominent figures, including then-City Supervisor Diane Feinstein, then-Governor Ronald Reagan, Olympic champion Jesse Owens, Arnold Schwarzenegger, Hubert Humphrey, Walter Mondale, Jane Fonda, Clarice Leachman, Cass Elliot, Dorothy Multer. A woman, she talked to a woman who lived alone in the boundary waters between Minnesota and Canada, which got a lot of publicity, that story. Also, she was an adventurous spirit. She never shied away from an exciting story. She reported on a lot of significant events with unique experiences during her career, including being the only television reporter at the Rolling Stones' infamous concert at Altamont Raceway in 1969, flying with the Blue Angels, sailing with the Coast Guard in a heavy storm, going to London for Queen Elizabeth's 50th birthday celebration, flying in the Goodyear Blip, where she actually flew the aircraft herself briefly. She met her husband, Irv Reifman, in 1976. They married in '77, and soon they had two children. She retired from television after her son was born, but she stayed active in the community. Many of us remember Myra for her warm generosity, her unceasing desire to learn more about the world and the people in it. But often, she said, her happiest time was the last four years being gambling to her grandchildren, Celia, Lena, and Charlotte. She survived by her husband, Irv, their children, her siblings, and many nieces, nephews, and grandchildren. She will be dearly missed. The family asks that contributions in her memory may be made to the Center for Healthcare Rights, 520 South Lafayette Park Place, Los Angeles. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld. Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President. Members, I ask that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Arthur Day, prominent figure in the Watts community. Born on February 12th, 1938, passed away on December 28th. Arthur was an entrepreneur for over 35 years. He was the owner and operator of A. Day and Sons. And Arthur and his family, Betty, were married for 65 years, had eight children of their own. After raising their children, they provided love, care, and support to numerous children as foster parents. He was a pillar to the community in which he resided. Arthur Day was an inspiration to many of the youth and young adults in the Watts neighborhood, and he encouraged them to follow their dreams and goals, never gave up, and always told them to complete what you start. He, with years of wisdom under his belt, he was often looked up to, provide direction and support to the youth in Watts. Our love and condolences go out particularly to Betty Day, who is also very active in, as you may know, members in the Watts Gang Task Force. Betty Day is in the forefront of intervention prevention in the Watts community and has been very active and vocal. So Betty, we love you. If you're listening, we're praying for you. Your husband was greatly, will be greatly missed, but his love and spirit will live in the hearts of many, particularly in the Watts community. May he rest in peace. Thank you, Madam President, members.
Thank you. Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Thank you, Madam President. Permit me to adjourn in memory of Thomas Cornelius McLurkin, Sr., who passed at the age of 99. Mr. McLurkin was born November the 14th, 1921, Camp Stuttenberg in the Philippines. He was born into a military family that relocated to the United States in 1922. He settled in Fort Alchuka, Arizona. And while attending the University of California at San Barbara, he was drafted to serve in the US Army during World War II. Mr. McLurkin became a second lieutenant in the Air Corps and ultimately was assigned to the Tuskegee Airmen Bomber Unit as a navigator bombardier. And he rose through the ranks to first lieutenant, was honorably discharged from service in 1946. Now, after the Army, he resumed his education at UCSB, earning a Bachelor's of Arts, going on to earn a Master's of Science and Education from the University of Southern California. While teaching, obtaining his teaching credentials, he began his involvement with the Los Angeles Unified School District and became an elementary school teacher in 1950. He rose through the ranks within LAUSD, ultimately becoming a principal in 1964, which is when I met him. He distinguished himself and his commitment to foster and mentor rising educators. And so as in 1968, he co-founded the Council of Black Administrators, one of the many lasting legacy that we will attach to his name. He retired in 1986, and Mr. McLurkin was passionate about education and was dedicated to his students. And I, for one, am profoundly appreciative for the impact he had on my life and the model that he set forth. At that time, Madam President and colleagues, there weren't a lot of African Americans who were in the role of principal. He was one of the early ones on. And beyond being an educator, he was a fierce competitor. He loved tennis. He was an avid reader and might have had an accomplished grill master. He was a loyal Trojan. He would be at the Coliseum and at the Rose Bowl, and no one would shout, "Fight on!" louder than he would. He survived by his five children, 14 grandchildren, his brother, sisters-in-law, nieces and nephews, great nieces and nephews, cousins, and beloved friends in a grateful community that will forever remember him and lift up his memory as one who cared about people, cared about students, cared about the faculty. He simply cared as a human being. He lived a long and rich life. May Thomas Cornelius McLurkin rest in peace, and may we ever seek to emulate his legacy. Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I'd like to slide on to the previous adjournment. He was a pioneer. I did not know him personally, but certainly through my reputation. And I'd be honored, Mr. Ridley Thomas, to sign on that with you.
Indeed.
Colleagues, it's a great sadness that I adjourn today's meeting in the memory of Gregory Everett, another angel in Los Angeles. Gregory passed away due to COVID-19 complications on January 24th at 58 years old. This is the second constituent in as many weeks that I've adjourned in the memory of, as their life was cut short by this disease. Greg was a well-respected Los Angeles filmmaker and hip-hop historian, was an important figure in South LA and West Coast hip-hop history. Greg, whose father was a Black Panther, is best known for his 2010 documentary, 41st and Central, The Untold Story of the LA Chapter of the Black Panther Party. His connection to South, to South LA was strong, as he was deeply connected with elders within the community, and always carried the lineage of his father's Black Panther involvement. In time, I knew Greg as being extremely optimistic and positive, as he was a strong advocate for youth and involvement in our community. He was a small business owner and one of the first West Coast DJs to play rap music in the 80s. He also promoted dance parties through his company Ultra Wave Productions, which was a centerpiece in LA, in LA's hip-hop community throughout the 80s. Greg was a family man, an devoted father, and he always had his wife and children at his side. His presence in the community will be sorely missed, and may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
May I join Mr. Price through the chair?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Joining that request, it was your pleasure, Price.
Absolutely. It'd be my honor, gentlemen. Thank you.
There's been a request by Mr. Ridley Thomas and Mr. Harris Dawson to join Mr. Price's adjournment. Thank you. There's been a joint request by Mr. De Leon and Mr. Sadio. Mr. De Leon?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Colleagues, I adjourn in the memory today of Ruby De Vera, who was a trailblazer in our community, paving the way for many to dedicate their life to public service. Now, Rudy started, actually, her career in civic participation right here in the city of Los Angeles back in 1996 for then-council member Richard Alatorre, who was council member for CD14. Now, she covered the area of Eagle Rock and in the span- Now, she covered the area of Eagle Rock, and in the span of three and a half years, accomplished the restoration of the old Eagle Rock Library in the Eagle Rock Community Center, and helped spearhead the dedication of the rock, you know, to the community, and a host of so many other accomplishments that have greatly improved the community, such as actually concerts in the park right in Eagle Rock. Back in 1999, three years later, Judy Ruby joined the staff of also then-councilmember Jackie Goldberg for Council District Number 13 as a community advocate. In 2001, Ruby worked for District One under Councilmember Ed Reyes. And she actually, back in 2005, she ran for City Council, CD14. She got the third-largest number of votes, and it was the largest total votes a Filipino-American candidate ever received in the entire Los Angeles City election. So Ruby's civic involvement also included being the president of the Glassell Park Improvement Association, the Northeast Democratic Club, the Filipino-American Business Association of Glendale, the Filipino-American Community of Eagle Rock, the Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees, and founding president of the Filipino-American Carwanas Club of Glendale, among many, many, many other organizations. Now, obviously, she was a woman who was highly recognized by all levels of power, being federal, state, and local. She was the Democrat of the Year for Assembly District Number 45, the district that I used to represent back in the State Assembly back in the day. She was also Woman of the Year for the 55th Assembly District. Now, Ruby retired back in the city, from the city back in 2010, and worked with the community in retirement. She founded also to the Northeast LA Veterans Parade, and today we still enjoy her work. Northeast LA Eagle Rock is forever shaped by who this woman was, an incredible pillar of strength, a woman who exuded such dignity and elegance, a woman who was proud to be a Filipino-American woman, a woman who advocated for our community. Now, she passed away just the other day, January 31st, and she passed away due to complications from the coronavirus. So I ask all of my colleagues to adjourn in her memory. She survived by her husband of 51 years, that being Andy, her two children, Randy and Teresa, and her three grandchildren, Zoe, Pax, and Tomas. Madam President, another colleague of ours who had a long history with Ruby De Vera, that's councilmember Gil Sadio, would also like to share a few words and also join in a journey in her memory.
Thank you, Mr. De Leon. Mr. Sadio?
Let me attach myself to the thorough acknowledgement by Senator De Leon. You know, this is difficult, because it's within the context of the pandemic. It's within the context of the ignorance we saw this weekend at Dodger Stadium. It angers me to think that we lost Ruby from this virus so quickly. Just she, as Mr. De Leon has indicated, was a pillar of our community. I was so flattered to work with her and have her support. She did the work that is what is the work of being in local government. Restoring libraries, fixing sidewalks, noting landmarks, farmers' markets, parades that I could never miss, creating parades that didn't exist, down the street from parades that did exist, which I could never miss. Just did that outreach and that footwork and that neighbor-to-neighbor, door-to-door, block-to-block, community-to-community work. And she's just a pillar of the city. Over here in the Northeast, I mean, everybody knows her. She's the go-to person, the person of influence. It didn't matter who she worked for, Alatore, Goldberg, Reyes, Wendy Gruehl. She was the continuity of leadership in the Northeast part of the city. She was the go-to. She was the person that, as the offices that were privileged to hold transitioned to new electeds, she was the person that the community looked to for that continuity, for that stability. She was, in the Northeast, she was that rock. And so, obviously, incredibly sad. Sad for her husband of 51 years, her son and daughter, but also very upset and angry that this is the battle that we are fighting for, the all that was discussed today about workers, all that's discussed about our efforts to protect the citizens of the city. And then within that context, to have to observe the arrogance and entitlement and ignorance that all converged around the stadium this weekend. And maybe having a little more difficulty with this than others, other tragedies. I thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to thank you, Mr. De Leon and Mr. Sadio, for adjourning in Ruby De Vera's memory. I'd like to also be part of that. I, as a Glassell Park resident, I considered Ruby a neighbor. I first met her when she worked for Jackie Goldberg, when I was deeply entrenched in the private sector and knew very little about local government, and would go to Glassell Park Improvement Association meetings and see her report on issues that then-councilmember Jackie Goldberg was working on in the 13th District. And from that, I was more involved, became more involved in the Glassell Park Improvement Association and other volunteer efforts just to improve the neighborhood, because Ruby represented exactly what pride in the community meant. And that's the logo of the GPIA. And she basically induced me to serve on the board of the GPIA, where I later served as its president. And then back in 2002, when Eric Garcetti took a chance on me for his own staff, it was a career change for me. So I sought out the wise counsel of Ruby De Vera and also then-Linda Herbert, who was working for Nick Baceco as a deputy, both of them Glassell Park residents. And so I made a trek to their doors, sat with them, and I said, "Tell me all about what it's like to be a council deputy." And so I always considered Linda and Ruby one of my mentors in public service, because they not only made it their professional mission to serve their own communities of Glassell Park, but also the city of Los Angeles writ large, working for the elected officials that they both worked for. Ruby was definitely a force of nature. She was tireless. She was effective. A lot of the improvements in Glassell Park that I get to enjoy come from her vision and the collaboration of her work as a volunteer and in her professional life with a lot of the old-school Glassell Park activists that I feel like I stand on the shoulders of. Went to many gatherings at her house back in the day. She was a wonderful host. Her husband, Andy, I am so glad to hear that it looks like he's out of the woods. And Teresa De Vera, of course, who is a commissioner on our disability commission and her selfless work. And then her son, Randy. A really wonderful, amazing, outstanding Los Angeles family that I was and I was and is and am so privileged to have known and know. I just want her family and everyone who loved Ruby De Vera to know the depth of my gratitude and the depth of my appreciation for her legacy there in Glassell Park. And I know that a lot of our mutual friends and neighbors there in Glassell Park are hearing this tribute and are very appreciative of acknowledging her great work over the years. Ruby De Vera, rest in peace. You will be forever in our hearts and our minds, and we thank you and your family for sharing her with us all of these years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you so much, Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Sadio, and Mr. De Leon, for all your beautiful words about Ruby. You know, yes, I grew up in the Northeast San Fernando Valley, but my family roots extend to Northeast Los Angeles. And it was there that I first had my start as a young staffer, working for then-councilmember Mike Hernandez. It was there that I met Ruby De Vera, when she was working for councilmember Richard Alatorre. And her passion and her service in the Northeast was tremendous. You know, she was a resident at Glassell Park. Her activism and her passion really extended into the work as a deputy as she was representing the 14th District. And it was, you know, quite a collaboration. You know, that so often, the challenges that our districts experience, they don't know council boundaries. And it really is important to have strong collaborations with colleagues and adjoining staff members from other offices. And Ruby was one of those staff members that we used to partner and collaborate on so many projects that meant the world of difference in the community. And so it's needless to say, and just another tragedy amongst so many that we are seeing as a result of COVID. But the blessing of her life is that the passion that she had for public service has extended and continued in her daughter, and that's in the service that Teresa provides our city in service on the commission for the Department of Disability. And so I just want to also add myself to, you know, sending my condolences to the family and my gratitude for the family sharing Ruby for as many years as we've had her. She was, as Kevin mentioned, her service didn't extend just simply to civic activities within, you know, in and around the city, but with city service, but also with the Democratic Party. She, I remember her very early days with Northeast Democrats and just all of the work that she did. So, you know, she has left an indelible mark in the city of Los Angeles for her service, and may she rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Any other adjourned motions? Seeing that our meeting is adjourned, thank you.